Order is to ask everyone to rise as we do the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good vows, thank you. Dear Lord, we come to unite, we just ask you, God, to just please God us as we go through this meeting. Help us make the best decisions, God, for our community. And I just thank you, God, for all the blessings you give us. For Lord, I just pray that decisions we make, God, would be the best ones we can do for this town. And God, I just pray that we continue going forward with unity. And I pray all these things in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Well, good evening to everyone. Thank you for being here at this time with the clerk call roll, please.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Sherrill?
Here.
Ms. McGee?
Here.
Ms. Poe?
Here.
Mayor Kathy?
Here.
We'll move down, this is public comment time. If there's anything that's not on the posted agenda, you may address the board. Mr. Burridge, good evening. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mayor. For the record, my name is Mark Burridge. If I may, I would like to make an editorial comment before I begin. And that is to say, as a citizen, I thank this council for what I consider exceptional leadership. I'm a big believer that leaders get the organization they deserve. And so to that end, I have never, thank the council and the city manager for fail to mention that. But I've lived here for approximately 20 years now, and I don't believe I've ever seen the city ran better, ran more efficient than it is today. And y'all are the leaders, and so I see that permeating to all aspects of city government. While I'm here today, I wrote all the council a letter, kind of giving a brief, semi-brief history of where the golf course was, where it is now, and a little bit of where we hope it may go in the future. I know that I'm not on the agenda, but I wanted the council to know that I will make myself present at the next city council meeting. Should you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer those. And I'll show up to any council meeting that y'all would like, or maybe answer questions. If I don't know the answer, I will get it to you, I promise. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I just want to make a comment. I appreciate you doing this for me, Mark. I appreciate it because I just had some concerns about it and not knowing enough information to even talk about it. So, anyway, thank you for this.
Any other comments? Mark, thank you.
Thank you, Father.
All right, hearing none, we'll move down to the business agenda. Item number one, discussion and/or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting of February 3rd, 2025.
I recommend approving.
Have a motion.
On second.
Motion of second, roll call, please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
And Mr. Kathy, or Mayor Kathy?
Yes. Item number two, discussion and/or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting of February 10th, 2025.
I recommend approving. On second.
Have a motion of second, roll call, please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Mayor Kathy?
Yes. Item number three, discussion and/or action regarding accepting or rejecting the city manager's report. Good evening, Mr. Delay.
Good evening, everyone. Everyone's enjoying this nice weather we're having.
Oh, yeah.
My report is on attachment number three. If anybody has any questions. One amendment, I won't be attending meetings on Thursday and Friday in Ho Chi Town. They have been rescheduled for May.
Did I say they're already doing the roads and stuff?
Probably so.
I saw the light, you know, somebody got that.
Yeah, they're probably, probably, probably some.
If anybody does have any questions, I recommend approving.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion of second, roll call, please.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
And Mayor Kathy?
Yes. Item number four, discussion and/or action on approving or rejecting the purchase orders for the city of Atoka in the month of January 2025.
Those are on attachment number four. I went through all those today. Anyone has any questions?
Questions? If not, do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion of second, roll call, please.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Chairman, or Mayor Kathy?
Yes. Item number five, discussion and/or action regarding accepting or rejecting the mutual aid agreement for the city of Atoka emergency management. Evening, Mr. Mullins.
We'll do a discussion on this item. Johnny's kind of told me we didn't quite get it worded correctly. What this is, this is the same agreement that we signed a while back with the city of Stringtown, or the town of Stringtown. We're wanting to sign it with the town of Tuskegee and the town of Kaney. And it's only to be able to send the codes to their storm sirens. We're not responsible if they work or they don't work or anything like that. The reason being, they're down to just firefighters. That's only the ones that's activating their systems. All it takes is one call, there's nobody around the station. And just like the last tornado warnings back in November, there was nobody around Kaney's for 15 minutes. And Tuskegee's, it was 26 minutes after the first warning before they got somebody to their station because there was a confusion. You know, we could help just send the signal. If it works, it works. If it don't, we try.
Yes, I was gonna say, how about the, what if we don't get the?
If we don't get them, we're not responsible. They understand that all we're doing is sending a signal. If it receives and it activates, great. If it don't, then that's on them.
And that's in here somewhere in this?
Yeah, this is the same one Johnny wrote for Stringtown. And it was wrote in there, I fully, it's just, we didn't have the names of the towns wrote in there on the agenda, which ones we were signing with. I just kind of wanted to make sure y'all were good with moving boards, talking to them, getting a copy of this. They've both been wanting for a while. It's just been something I've kind of been pushing off, trying to get some stuff in place.
We may have talked about this before, but how could the county's not taken care of?
We have the only emergency operations center in the county.
Okay.
So, the city of Durant does this. They have a mutual aid agreement doing this, so, but yeah.
So, it's not unheard of that the city takes care of?
Yeah. Like Brian, it was Durant, Brian County for the longest they split. Durant, kind of, kind of like us, they got the bigger operation doing more. County's just kind of falling back and just riding their coattails, is what I say, but, down there. But it's, it's just like that all over. There's several towns I can name that the cities do most of. And the nice thing about it is, yeah, we have three guys on staff that work out there during most. Two are Atoka firemen, one's Harmony. The likelihood of us both being gone, or all three being gone is slim to none because I will stay out there where they go to a fire call.
Okay.
So, we're, we always got somebody around. The nice thing about our system, we got the computer. Something happens, it will set them off itself. They won't have that access. It'd just be, we're around and we can reach them. The only thing we do have with Kaney's is we need a new radio mic. They've already talked about that purchase.
Okay, that's what I was gonna ask you. Is there a system set up?
Yeah, all it is, is a five-digit code that you type in like a keypad. They're gonna get us the mic, so we won't have to purchase it or nothing.
Okay, so who is it? Tuskegee, Kaney?
Just Tuskegee and Kaney.
And what about all the other little places?
There's no other storm sirens.
I mean, like Harmony, I mean, out in?
Harmony don't have any.
Ferris, they don't, okay. Do you think the county will put some out there and if we can activate them? I mean, could we?
There's been some talk about, like, we donated some to McGee Creek State Park. I think the park has finally decided they don't want them. So, I'm trying to get a letter to give them back, control back to us. And then we're gonna either auction them, or if I can find somebody else to donate them to. Trying to keep them in the county. I've got a couple people interested, but it kind of falls back into is if we would be willing to help them set them off is the main reason we're running into is they want to make sure there's a way to do that.
What about Lane? Daisy? What about?
Lane has an old unit that they have a control switch they turn on and off. It's not, it's the 1980s technology, or 70s technology. It's not like the 2000s and 2010s like we have.
Yeah.
So, there's, they are looking at updating them, but it's just funny. It's like everything else, it's funny.
What about Daisy? Since, you know, you got that ranch out there.
No, there's, there's nothing out there. They could, like I say, if for some reason the fire department out there bought one. We do have a repeater system that we run. They could actually program it to that repeater channel, and I could activate it from here because I can reach anywhere in the county with that repeater. But that's just something that if that comes up later down the road, and if y'all decide to accept that, then we would look at doing that. I don't see it for any, for anything right now.
If we got the ones back from McGee Creek, could we put them in some of those locations that don't have anything and?
We, what we would do is we would see if like Lane or something.
Not saying we spend the money, but could the towns do if we donated them to those towns?
That's their decision. I mean, we can't answer that one for them. And it's, I don't know that there's, you know, some of them don't have an active governance, so.
A lot of them would be on the fire departments, and if the cost of moving them and stuff like that, that's what happened.
Okay.
Okay, I mean, the safety aspect of it is great.
Yeah, and, and I would do anything I can do to help them move them. Like we said, we, we had made a deal with McGee that we'd help them move them. Like, I would go out there, help them take them down and all that on my time, you know, on the city's time. You know, the city couldn't help them. We'd fill in the hole that they left, but that was all we could do. But they never could get the statement, get the okay to do it. So, the new fire guy, he's like, I'm done with them. I just need a letter from you stating you're done.
Okay.
Okay.
We're not gonna prove it, no, this is just discussion.
Okay, and then that leads us to no action on item six?
Five.
Five, no action on five.
Okay, this is, nevermind, sorry, different deal. Okay. All right, item number six, discussion and/or action to approve or reject the adoption of the emergency operations plan for 2025 through 2030 for the city of Atoka.
It come by email to a lot of y'all. Erica did point out, the font's a little funky in it. It's a hundred and?
Is there a copy over there?
She's got a book right here.
Oh, it's a book?
Yeah, it's a, it's a hundred and six pages. It's, and it's a very boring read, I will admit to it. It's gonna have to, it will have to be a full rewrite here pretty quick, but what we're running into is come July, FEMA's gonna change the standards of the way that plan has to be wrote. And we'll have one year to comply with it. This being putting in place, as long as it's adopted prior to that time period, I don't have to sit there and retype this whole entire plan because we had no digital copy of that plan. It was only scanned in after it was signed by the council from back when the previous director was here and a lot of the previous council members. So, we actually had no, we tried to scan it in and do them old online programs that would convert it over.
I know what you're gonna say, you should have been able to use Adobe to convert.
It, that's what it done. That's what done a lot of, a lot of it was re, a lot of it was fixed. It went to 291 pages when I scanned it in. So, that, that's why it's, it's dropped to that font. Like I said, the font's a little, and then I've gone to a class to learn Microsoft Word a little bit better because I realized real quick, I did not understand it enough. But that, that'll get us by. I'm saying out until 2030, that gives us the five years time span that a plan is actually good for. It'll get us back into compliance with the grant, the MPG grant that I currently have. Then when FEMA adopts us, if it does come through in July, that'll give us a one-year time period to rewrite it or if they're gonna want it done within two, three months.
Okay.
So, we didn't take any action on number five?
Correct.
So, are you, we're not gonna add that in there?
No, you can take action on this.
This, this is the emergency operation plan, this.
But, I mean, is that the information that we're doing on five?
No.
No, they're not related.
Okay, alright.
It is related to our system. There is, the protocol for the storm siren is inside that, but that was adopted at a previous council meeting. I can't remember exactly which council meeting we adopted that, but we did adopt the, how the storm sirens are, or warning sirens are used, what the call signs was and all that. That come through about back in July, if I remember right. So, but that is in there. There's all kinds of stuff. Erica did ask a good question, what makes it confidential? I did realize the secondary attachment did not get printed. There is actually some pre-planning during, like, shooting, school shooting events and stuff like that where certain agencies are gonna stage. That's what we consider confidential. Because that's a plan, if somebody wants to do something, they start a deal there, then they know we're gonna be staging to target us. So, that's what makes that part of the plan confidential.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Have a motion of second, roll call, please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
And Mayor Kathy?
Yes. Is there any council comments? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion, I'll second.
Motion of second, roll call, please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
And Mayor Kathy?
Yes. Next meeting of the evening, the Atoka Municipal.
Same, Travis.
Thank you, Travis, thank you. The Atoka Municipal Authority, would you call roll, please?
You want us to sign this?
Yeah. I'll pick it up tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay.
Ms. Poe?
Here?
Mm-hmm, good answer, good answer.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Sherrill?
Here.
And Ms. McGee?
Here.
Chairman Kathy?
Here. You had a 50/50 chance.
I know.
All right, this is the public comment time. If there's anything that's not on the posted agenda, you may address the board at this time. Hearing none, we'll move down to the business agenda. Item number one, discussion and/or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting of February 3rd, 2025.
I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Have a motion of second, roll call, please.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
And Chairman Kathy?
Yes. Item number two, discussion and/or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting of February 10th, 2025.
I recommend approving.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion of second, roll call, please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Chairman Kathy?
Yes. Item number three, discussion and/or action on approving or rejecting the purchase orders for the Atoka Municipal Authority for the month of January 2025.
Those are on attachment number three. Anyone has any questions?
Almost to approve.
I'll second.
Have a motion of second, roll call, please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
And Chairman Kathy?
Yes. Item number four, discussion and/or action on approving or rejecting the purchase of a new backhoe off of Sourcewell contract from Associated Supply Company in the amount of $137,729.96, of which $75,000 even will be reimbursed by the SOTA REIT grant.
This was the grant I put in for last year to purchase a new backhoe for the transfer station. And this is where they awarded us $75,000 to make the purchase. So, we got the quote. This will leave us paying 62,729.96 of our funds to go with it. And that's on attachment number four.
Recommend approving.
I'll second.
Have a motion of second, roll call, please.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
And Chairman Kathy?
Yes. Is there any trustee comments? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion, I'll second.
Motion of second, roll call, please.
Mr. Turner?
Yeah.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
And Chairman Kathy?
Yes. All right, our next meeting of the evening, the Atoka City Industrial Development Authority, would you call roll, please?
Ms. McGee?
Here.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Ms. Poe?
Here.
Mr. Sherrill?
Here.
And Chairman Kathy?
Here. Yeah, this is the public comment time. This is anything that is not on the post agenda, you may address the board at this time. And hearing none, we'll move down to the business agenda. Item number one, discussion and/or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting on February 3rd, 2025.
I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Have a motion of second, roll call, please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
And Chairman Kathy?
Yes. Item number two, discussion and/or action regarding accepting or rejecting the Economic Development Director's report. Mr. Delay?
That is on attachment number two. Anyone has any questions?
Any question?
Anything that is coming up or that we can talk about? Any, anything new?
Not, nothing, other than the, the, hopefully get that survey done toward the end of the month for that program, you know, the road we're building out there.
Mm-hmm.
That's the main thing that we got going right now.
Okay. Almost to approve?
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion of second, roll call, please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
And Chairman Kathy?
Yes. Item number three, discussion and/or action on approving or rejecting purchase orders for the Atoka City Industrial Development Authority for the month of January 2025.
Those are on attachment number three. Anyone has any questions?
I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Have a motion of second, roll call, please.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
And Chairman Kathy?
Yes.
Item number four, discussion and/or action on entering into lease agreement with Green Lion for property located in the heavy industrial park. You want to take it away? You want to run with it?
Yes, as many of you are aware, Green Lion is currently operating in the industrial park facility that was leased to Gladio. I have been working with officials with Green Lion to negotiate a lease agreement between the city, between ACIDA and them to assist them in continuing their possession of those buildings. And the terms of the lease, we're going to do a five-year lease with them, same purch, same rent price as what we were charging Green Lion.
Green Gladio.
Gladio, I'm sorry, pretty much the same terms as their lease agreement for the time being. We may come back and ask to amend that or adjust those terms once we resolve the issues that we have with Gladio. But at this point, we just need to get a lease agreement in place with Green Lion to ensure that they remain there. Any questions?
Almost to approve.
All second.
Motion and second, roll call, please.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
And Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Chairman Kathy?
Yes.
As we move down, is there any trustee comments? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion, all second.
Motion and second, roll call, please.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
And Chairman Kathy?
Yes.
All right, as we move into the next meeting of the evening, the Otoka Industrial Facility Authority, would you call roll, please?
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Ms. McGee?
Here.
Mr. Sherrill?
Here.
Ms. Poe?
Yeah, here.
Chairman Kathy?
Here.
Again, this is public comment time. If there's anything that's not on the post agenda, you may address the board at this time. Hearing none, we'll move down to the business agenda. Item number one, discussion and/or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting of January 21st, 2025.
I recommend approving.
All second.
A motion and second, roll call, please.
Ms. McGee?
Here.
Ms. Poe?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Y'all got me.
I know.
Chairman Kathy?
Yes.
All right.